Call to order that June 12, 2017, Latrobe City Council meeting. Please stand for the pledge of the flag.
Pledge of the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, not God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time I would ask for a moment of silence to give thanks, to ask for guidance. Would you just quietly relax? Ms. Buck, roll call please. Oh, I'm sorry. I did it again. You just told me to do it and I forgot. Okay, we're going to have a public hearing on the proposed ordinance amending the Latrobe City Code to regulate medical marijuana establishments. Does anyone in the audience have anything they want to say regarding the proposed ordinance?
I'll just refresh everyone's recollection. We previously prepared an ordinance updating zoning code to address medical marijuana establishments. Previously, it was approved to be circulated pursuant to the Municipalities Planning Code and the Planning Commission and County. The ordinance is in final form, so at tonight's meeting, we will have it on the agenda if the council wishes to approve it.
Going once. Anyone want to speak regarding the ordinance? Okay, without, I'll close the public meeting and move on to roll call Ms. Buck.
Mr. Bartels.
Here.
Mr. Murtha.
Here.
Mrs. Weller.
Here.
Mr. Porish.
Here.
Mr. Bald Mary.
Here.
Ms. Deasy.
Mayor Walker.
Here.
Six present.
At this time, I ask for approval of minutes from the May 8, 2017, Latrobe City Council meeting.
I move the minutes of the May 8, 2017 meeting to be approved and accepted and be permitted to remain on the secretary's desk where they will be available for reading and inspection of any.
Thank you. Mr. Bartels, may I have a second please?
Madam Mayor, I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Murtha. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the fiscal department reports and paid bills for the month of May 2017?
I'll make that motion out there.
Thank you, Mr. Porish. May I have a second please?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Bald Mary. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. At this time, we have our citizens request portion of the meeting for items that relate to the agenda. If anyone would like to speak regarding items on the agenda, please go to the microphone, state your name and address, and please limit your comments to 35 minutes. Going once? Going twice? Okay, moving on. Committee reports. Finance, nothing to report. Public safety and public works?
No. We had a meeting, let me see, I'm looking at my notes here, on the 22nd. We got a report about the paving seminar that Mike Bray and Stuffy attended. Mike updated us on the paving schedule. Overall, just mostly updates and discussions about just some of the things that were upcoming.
Personnel committee? Zach, do you have anything?
None.
The other policemen that we're going to be approving later on here in the agenda? Events committee? Jerry Jack?
Okay.
Parking committee? Anything?
We talked a little bit about parking and all the situation that we were wanting to do with the lot over here making one spot, a handicap spot and stuff, and got together with Mike and I, we all kind of come to agree on a couple of things they could do and given the business owners are breaking into parking garages, one permit, two favors.
Thank you.
We talked about we're still open to selling that one lot and having Wayne reach out.
Yeah, the one behind 1100 building, the little lot they went to.
Oh, yes.
Wayne was going to look into that when he got back, see if he could get in contact with guys, see if they still wanted it or, you know.
Good. Anything else? Student showcase, Jack, did you guys meet?
No, we did not. We're out. We did that until the fall.
Okay. Ward and authority reports, nothing to report. Department reports. Mike? Mike, I know you have some information for us. Mike and I, we crashed. Can I tell the story?
Yes, yes.
We crashed Pendot meeting. What day was that?
That was last Wednesday.
Yeah, well, we found out that there was a meeting being held, so we kind of showed up on the bridge.
Unexpected.
And it was kind of funny. They were all like, hi.
Yeah, yeah, they weren't expected.
They were very gracious. They said we were more than welcome to stay, but it was going to be very technical, but they gave us an update and I'll let Mike go in.
Basically, the update is the bridge is going to be, probably as you well know, it's not open to two-way traffic during the 4th of July. It won't be open for two-way traffic for a long time. They're in between, behind schedule due to the weather, other factors that they ran into during the bridge construction. One of the issues that they had was initially that they advised that they were only supposed to remove about one to three inches of concrete. Well, they got into areas where they had to remove up to 13 inches, I think if it was right around that. So that put them on a delay. So, you know, unfortunately with the events coming up, we're going to develop a plan, you know, what we can do. I talked to Chief Boomer and since he's going to be out of the office, I'm going to speak with Sergeant Nuntio tomorrow. We're going to start developing a plan, what we can do for the 4th of July to help ease traffic, but everyone's still going to have to be patient and, you know, I think we're going to work this out and everything will be fine.
Yeah, they did assure us that they were still on schedule as far as completion of the bridge, that both lanes would be open by the winter.
Correct, yes.
That they would probably be back in the spring to do some other things, but we knew that.
Right.
So I think we're just going to have to wait and see, but they seemed confident that they were in a good place and that they got everything, all the bad stuff out.
Yes, yeah. And they're going to still work with us for whatever, you know, we need, where they can assist us with. You know, the other thing I'm going to look into is if Pendot's willing to put some additional message boards up, just advising people that are coming in to Latrobe for the 4th of July, try to get them, you know, on the right routes, you know, so.
Yeah, I mean, I talked to Chief Brazili tonight too. He called me and said he couldn't make the meeting and we talked briefly about it. And, I mean, I know between our police department and our public works department and I fire department, we'll hit people in and out of here, but it's just, as Mike says, we're just going to have to be patient. You know, it's a one-time thing and there's not a whole lot we can do about it. We're just going to kind of suffer through it. I just, I hope it doesn't deter people from coming in because it's still, you know, as always, going to be a fabulous event and, you know, once you get into town, you can stick around and we'll hit you out.
Right, right, yeah. We'll get the traffic done and so.
We'll get it done. Yeah.
Mike, I just wanted to thank you guys for putting that crosswalk in by Company One.
Oh, you're welcome.
The day of the meeting, I talked to Eric about it.
Okay.
We watched, well, I watched children come down with their teachers.
Yeah.
Try the cross there. It was pretty dangerous.
Yeah, and that location, you know, with that being at the intersection, it had the ADA ramps already on it, so, you know, that was fine. You know, it worked out great. So, thank you.
Yeah, the one thing Mike informed me of, which I didn't know, is, you know, because we talk about why can't we put crosswalks here and there and anything, you can't put a crosswalk somewhere where there isn't an ADA accessible ramp. So, you know, some of these other places where we've talked about, we'd have to do the ADA ramps first before we can put a crosswalk and that can be, those ramps can be pretty costly, so.
And, you know, also given the location, sometimes they just can't be done, you know, if you don't have the elevation, you know, to the increase in distance.
Do you have anything else to report, Mike?
Uh, I can't, no.
That's not me.
Is there something else?
No.
Okay, okay.
You know what?
No, I have a lot of other things, but I'm going to have to wait until the agenda meeting.
No, that wasn't a setup.
Okay, I'm like, wait, is there something?
No. I just wondered if besides the Ford, do you have anything else?
No, the other stuff's going to come later this month.
Sergeant Nuntio, do you have anything for the police department? No. Ann?
I do not have anything.
Okay. Brazili, Chief Brazili said he wasn't going to make it. Okay, so we're moving on to the agenda. Zach?
Item 10A1, approving the hire of a police officer for the Latrobe Police Department. This motion is a little different than was initially prepared last week. Chief Boomer updated me on Friday, so I have to change this motion. It's a motion to make a conditional offer to hire Matthew Reeves as a full-time police officer and employee of the police department with compensation, benefits, rights, duties, and responsibilities to be determined pursuant to the terms of collective bargaining agreement pending and contingent upon the results of his physical and psychological evaluations.
Okay, may I have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve the motion as outlined by the solicitor.
Thank you. Mr. Bartels, may I have a second please?
I'll second, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Porish. Any questions or discussion?
Do we know any timeframe on this, the hiring?
I personally don't. I would rather defer to the police.
July 3rd.
July 3rd?
Perfect.
Poor guy.
Any other questions? Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
The next item on the agenda is concerning the grant funding for Laurel Valley's DUI task force. This is a resolution of the City of Latrobe, West Monroe County, authorizing the execution of the agreement for Laurel Valley's DUI course. This is a form resolution as required by the state, so the appropriate action would be to approve the resolution as outlined by the solicitor.
May I have a motion to approve the resolution as outlined by the solicitor?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second please?
I'll second.
Any questions or discussion? I mean, this is something that we did discuss at the agenda prep session. It's our understanding from the chief that the DUI task force is working out very, very well, so, good stuff. Okay, Ms. Buck?
This is Resolution 2017-20. Mrs. Weller?
Yes.
Mr. Bald Mary?
Yes.
Mr. Murtha?
Yes.
Mr. Porish?
Yes.
Mr. Bartels?
Yes.
Mayor Walker?
Yes.
There's six yeses.
The next item on the agenda is under Planning and Development Department. This is amending the code of Latrobe regulating the medical marijuana establishments. This is an ordinance that has been, is entitled amending Chapter 166 of the Code of the City of Latrobe to regulate medical marijuana establishments. This is a zoning ordinance, so we had to comply with the Municipalities Planning Code and it was appropriately noticed and provided to the consulting agencies as required by the code. This ordinance follows the state law, the Medical Marijuana Act, but adds some zoning restrictions, including the citing of locations and certain operational requirements, which has been fully briefed to the council during the agenda session. So the appropriate action to take would be to make a motion approving the ordinance as outlined by the solicitor.
May I have a motion to approve the ordinance as outlined by the solicitor?
I'll make that motion out there.
Thank you, Mr. Porish. May I have a second please?
I'll second.
Any questions or discussion? I just want to thank you, Zach, for getting us ahead of the game on this. I mean, I think before it becomes, before someone comes here, we, you know, I think we were proactive and I appreciate you getting us on board with that.
Thank you.
I just have a general question. Have these stores already been opening up in other parts of the state? Have they been issued?
No, they haven't been opened yet. The permitting process was opened up at the state level earlier this year and the review period was anticipated to be approximately a year, so I wouldn't expect to see any of the establishments, you know, actually operating until the end of the year, beginning of next year. However, certain municipalities, Vanessa and I believe one of the keys for have received applications for the citing of these establishments, so the people are getting ready to do it. They just haven't started operations yet.
Okay. Any other questions? Ms. Buck?
This is ordinance 2017-9. Mr. Bald Mary?
Yes.
Mr. Porish?
Yes.
Mr. Murtha?
Yes.
Mrs. Weller?
Yes.
Mr. Bartels?
Yes.
Mayor Walker?
Yes.
There's six yeses.
The next item on the agenda is Planning and Development Department, item two. This is a motion to authorize the solicitor to prepare an ordinance updating the City of Latrobe's code book concerning the regulation of signs.
May I have a motion to, oh, we just need a motion to authorize you to update the ordinance. Okay. May I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
May I have a second please? I'll second, thank you. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
The next item on the agenda, again, under Planning and Development Department. This motion is follows, to authorize the mayor to execute a confirmatory grant of right of way and easement relating to the easement the city holds on the area of Unity Run's intersection with the Loyola Creek.
This is a motion?
Yes.
May I have a motion please?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Murtha. May I have a second please?
I'll second, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Porish. Questions?
Yeah, what is?
Yeah, I know, I was going to, but I was waiting for somebody to ask because we did not discuss this at the agenda prep session.
In approximately 2000, an easement was prepared that gave the city the right to enter on land to maintain the Unity Run culvert, which drains Unity Run into the Loyola Creek. It's by the Mary Street.
Okay.
The grant of, the easement was reported in approximately 2001, however, when it was recorded by the city, the exhibit to the easement was missing and that easement was the actual meets and bounds description of the easement. So we had a document that said the city has the right to go on the property as detailed in the attachment and there was no attachment. So this easement just confirms our interest in that right of way.
Did you find this, Zach?
The code enforcement officer and myself did. We were working on some development in that area and noticed that the easement wasn't filed properly.
This has to do with some of the properties over on Mary Street, correct? Ann, is that how you found it or?
I knew there was an easement there, I just didn't know it worked when from here to here and I thought we'd be in that ordinance, that easement, but it wasn't, so we did find one that showed there was an easement though, so that needs to be recorded, so it is.
I mean, I guess the question is, what made you look?
Yeah, that, did you sleep at night or?
Well, yeah.
What made you look?
What made you look was, we'll be coming up in the agenda session, I can't even just say that?
Yeah, I, okay. Yeah. Okay. I, I think I know what it is. I think I know what you're talking about, so we'll wait till agenda prep because then we'll be ready to talk about it. Okay, what is that?
Oh, okay.
Okay. So, okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Next, we move to Administration and Finance Department, item one. This is a motion item. The motion is to authorize the Greater Latrobe Laurel Valley Regional Chamber of Commerce to store banana split festival materials in the city.
May I have a motion please?
I'll make the motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
All right. Any questions or discussions?
This is short-term, right?
Yeah.
Defined short-term.
Well, my guess would be, you know, when we need the space, they're out.
Wayne made this deal, so.
Yeah, I mean, we're talking about stop, so I think if we get it to a point where we don't have room for it, then they'll have to move it.
Right, this doesn't authorize a lease, so they don't have a leasehold interest in the property. If it ever becomes a problem, council can vote to rescind the motion.
All right. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item C2. This is a resolution providing commercial entities with a discount from the monthly permit parking fee for the parking garage. This ordinance would permit commercial entities holding an interest in the real property of the City of Latrobe to park two vehicles in the top level of the city's parking garage at a discount of $25 per month per spot from the general rate. Again, this is only the top level and it's a discount of $25 per spot, two spots. They have to show that they're a commercial entity holding an interest in the real property of the city, so that's if they own their commercial property or their leasing space, a lot of things of that nature. And the rest of the resolution authorized the city officials to take any action necessary. So the appropriate action would be to make a motion to approve the resolutions outlined by the solicitor.
May I have a motion to approve the resolutions outlined by the solicitor?
I'll make that motion, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Porish. May I have a second please?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Bartels. Zach, I have a question.
Aye.
It's not a discount, I mean, I guess, I'm just wondering the way it's written. Are we discounting the current price by $25 or is the fee $25?
Discounting by $25.
So how much is the fee?
Forty or forty-five?
The normal fee with the discount will now be $40.50. This is from Wayne. I got an email from Wayne on the 25th of May. Rooftop parking garage only, $25 per vehicle, limited to vehicles per business. Normal fee with discount is $40.50.
Okay, so the normal fee is fifty, wait a minute, I don't understand. That doesn't make sense to me. I think he wants it to be $25.
I agree, but the normal fee's forty and the discount is kind of $20. That's why I'm.
It's normally $40 and the reason why he has that, $25.
It used to be 10 and that's when everybody parked up there.
Yeah, that's why I'm a little confused.
And when all the changes were made, then the rooftop went to 25 and everything else was 40, but nobody really wants up there and now that it's gone 10 bucks.
Can, can, can.
The normal fee would have been forty some, uh, $40.
Well, I think what Bartels told me was there was a time when we discounted the top sh, the top, the top floor.
Yeah, I thought this was going to be a discount for anywhere in there. This is top level.
Top level. And then in the wintertime when we closed the winter, they could move down to the next level. That's what we discussed between the last meeting.
Can, can.
I have to look at it again and see because that was a long time ago.
I know. Well, I guess what I'm trying to figure out, is it 40 minus 25 or is it 25?
My understanding is it was 40 minus 25.
So that means it's 15.
I mean, I don't think that this is an emergency issue that has to be addressed. Now, if council wants clarification, we can just, you know, let it go without a motion and we can address it the next week.
So I need to table it or not, or do I need to make a motion to table or?
Yeah, we can make a motion to table.
I can reach that.
Can we, can we still discuss? I just have one.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, I mean, I don't care, we don't have to table it, but.
You have a first and second, so you're allowed to discuss.
Right. Yeah, I know, we can discuss, yes.
Yeah, then you can.
Go ahead.
Like, what do we do if it seem, like, what if in the case it seems like vehicles, one of the vehicles is just a broken down vehicle that we're just scrolling in apartment?
We'll address that.
Yeah, that's always addressed, that's the only.
Yeah. I guess I'm just not comfortable passing this one. I don't know whether it's $15 or $25 or if it's really a discount from the top shut, top level with Wayne not being here. Can I have a motion to table this to next meeting?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Porish. May I have a second please?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Murtha. All in favor of tabling this to the July meeting?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I apologize, I had my notes and I didn't bring them with me.
That's okay. It's okay.
Yes.
All right, we'll just talk about that. And we will not let Wayne go on vacation anymore.
We might have to make another decision.
Oh, really? I don't, maybe I'm just misunderstanding it, but.
Well, I, the way it's written is, my understanding from our parking authority, or not, I'm sorry, not parking authority, Parking Committee meeting in Latrobe was that it's $40 and they were not.
Yeah, that was mine, I had that all written down.
Two. But what you're saying changes things.
Yeah.
Okay.
The way it's working.
Table, moving on.
This is a resolution item authorizing the city mayor and or manager to sign a whole harmless agreement for the fireworks display for the 4th of July committee. All this resolution does is authorizes the city to sign the whole harmless agreement. This is an annual item that we've been doing since probably I've been, I was in law school.
Longer than that?
Yeah. So the appropriate action is to make a motion to approve the resolution as outlined by the solicitor.
I think we did, it was longer than you've been alive, but, okay.
I wouldn't know that.
May I have a motion please?
I'll make a motion to approve the res, or, uh.
Resolution.
Resolution as outlined by the solicitor.
May I have a second please?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion? Ms. Buck?
This is Resolution 2017-21. Mr. Porish?
Yes.
Mrs. Weller?
Yes.
Mr. Bald Mary?
Yes.
Mr. Murtha?
Yes.
Mr. Bartels?
Yes.
Yes.
There's six yeses.
Last item is C4. This is a resolution accepting the bid of Kozmkowski's Roofing Incorporated to replace the roof on Fire Station 6. They were the lowest bidder with a total price of $68,000. So this is, the appropriate action would be to make a motion to approve the resolution as outlined by the solicitor.
May I have a motion to approve the resolution as outlined by the solicitor?
I'll make that motion, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Porish. May I have a second please?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Bartels. Any questions or discussion? Ms. Buck?
This is Resolution 2017-22. Mr. Bartels?
Yes.
Mr. Bald Mary?
Yes.
Mr. Murtha?
Yes.
Mrs. Weller?
Yes.
Mr. Porish?
Yes.
Mayor Walker?
Yes.
There's six yeses.
Okay, thank you. Any, okay, moving on to unfinished business. Unfinished business? Are you here to talk about the fire pits? Someone?
Oh, no. I have.
Ma'am, are you here to talk about the fire pits? Okay. Well, then I'll talk about the fire pits. Under unfinished business. I had a complaint from a resident and I talked to Ann. The complaint was that these people, it's a legal fire pit that they registered and it's got all the proper setbacks and everything, but they kind of started it off at like Friday night and it just burned all weekend long. So, um, sometimes that would have been there.
That's right.
I know. So, again, you know, we just need to encourage people to call 911 if they see anything like that and we, you know, but as we go and when Chief Boomer gets back and, Dr. Columbia, you might have something, I don't know what you're hearing out there, but we may have to put some stipulations around this. It's pretty wide open. Yes, sir.
When you do that, I have a stipulation on two that goes with speakers with fire pits and outside.
Noise?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, we might have to put some time limits around this. I don't know. I just think, I want to talk to the chief when he gets back and see, you know, he had said he had some complaints, so I haven't seen the list of complaints, so we need to look into that. I don't know if you guys are hearing anything. I got the, I did get one call about that and she said that she had her house completely about that, and she said that she had her, her house completely shut off, shut up, but, you know, the air conditioning is still pulling it in, and when it runs, you know, all day for 48 hours constantly, um, certainly not, and she believed they were burning garbage. So, again, I, you know, I urge people to call 911, and...
Yeah, I, I...
I just wanted to make sure.
... opposed to, you know, like day limits or anything like that. I'd like to see, maybe like run this through, like a season, like the summer season, and see how many, you know, the nature and frequency of the complaints. Again, I'd also like to see some, you know, the enforcement take place if they're burning garbage. Or did the woman call 911, do you know?
Not to my knowledge, no. Okay.
Well, that's the thing, you're going to get people, when you tell them to call 911, they're not going to want to call 911 or something like that, because they feel like it's not an emergency situation. I, I mean, it's bottom line.
Right, and we can still try to...
I mean, it's, it's, you know, nothing to deal with.
Yeah, I mean, that's pretty much true about every, every, um, every case. I mean, I know the chief has said repeatedly, you know, on, on a lot of different things, that, you know, we need to call 911, and I, I know everybody looks at calling 911 as, as you only call them when there's an emergency, but if you have a complaint, that doesn't necessarily mean someone's going to be there right away, like if you called for a car accident, but at least there's a record of the complaint, and the idea is to get the complaint on record so that we have, you know, that we can track and trace it, and so, as, you know, so we can sit down and look, okay, these are all the complaints we've had, these are the issues that we've had. But, and, to be honest with you, I've had as, I've had as many, if not more, people comment to me that, you know, they appreciate the opportunity to be able to do it, um, so...
I was just wondering how many permits were issued in total, Ann?
I believe thirty-nine.
So is it early?
Thirty-nine?
We have about a hundred people burning, probably. I've received thirty-nine calls in the last month.
Are you keeping track of them, and letting Ann know?
I just don't call 911, that's what y'all told me to do.
You do?
I voted no, y'all wanted me.
Or me?
That also sends out where 911 will call, and then 911 will release our notes, or how...
Yeah, we can't solve a problem if we don't know about it.
I'd like to know where all these people were before we enacted it.
Right.
Complaining about the people who were burning or illegal, you know.
Yeah, that's a good question, because I, I, the, um, one person I spoke with, and I explained to her, well, we had more people coming here encouraging us to do it, and we did a lot of research on other municipalities that do it, so it wasn't like we, I don't think we were responsible in doing the research necessary, and, you know, um, just like anything else, I think it can be fine tuned if it needs to be, but, you know, people don't tell us, we don't, we can't, we can't fix it, so... Okay, any, any other unfinished business? Any new business? Uh, yeah, we need to, well, I don't know if I'd consider this new business, but yeah, this, I think we talked about this at the agenda meeting. This is the, um, problem that we're having, but that was on First Avenue, wasn't it?
We talked about this amongst each other, the other guy's in the second letter.
Yeah.
Because Eric and I both went down...
We talked about, yeah. The, um, we need to get permit parking over by the hospital. So put that on the list for Wayne.
Are you saying we need to?
I think we do. I mean, the complaints from the residents is that, we had permit parking over there years ago on this, this block. Well, I think it was all over the place. It was taken out.
I don't know where it ever ended up.
We talked at the agenda session, uh, last month.
First Avenue.
Yeah, First Avenue, and I think everyone was in agreeance with putting it on First Avenue, uh...
That's Tacoma, that's Wednesday.
Yeah, now, the one I think that you're looking at, I think we talked about that during the committee meeting.
During the department.
Yeah, and that one's on 131 West Tacoma. That's a separate issue.
That's what I thought, Mike.
Yeah, and that one, um, you know, we can, we can talk about it at the agenda meeting if you, if you wanted to, or...
I think we kind of dropped the ball on the First Avenue, because I think we did agree that we were, we would do that, didn't we?
The, the resolution's already been prepared.
Okay.
And it was going to be for the next meeting. With Wayne and R being out on vacation, it didn't make it on the agenda, and we didn't want to load it up, we already had like ten minutes.
Yeah, and, so maybe we can put this, we can talk about this one?
Yeah, I haven't seen that.
Okay, you can give that, you can have that. We can talk about this one at the June, um, agenda meeting, and then maybe have it on if we just so desire for the July meeting as well.
And I don't know if her information is correct on here, it says she believes that it would cost her $40 per vehicle per month to register to park in front of her own home.
No, I don't think that's...
That's incorrect.
No, permit parking for residential uses is without fee.
Right.
And that, um, she's misinformed here, how?
I, now, wait a minute, there's a fee, isn't there? Because we talked about this, but we were going to waive it.
We waived it for that one.
Yeah, we were going to, they're either, because we, we didn't want to have permit
parking for years, because it just keeps compounding till the entire town, surrounding counties, that permit parking, it snowballs, and that's why I think they got rid of some of those places, plus enforcement of it. Whenever somebody else parks there, and these people call and say, somebody's parked there, are we going to have, you know, our, our meter tenant being driven up there every time?
My recollection was, we took those signs out because, um, the hospital population, you know, had, had dwindled, you know, as far as the number of people that worked there, and, and we weren't having an issue with people parking there anymore. That's what my recollection was. And, and the same, because there's still permit parking signs, I think, over by Latrobe Steel, I think, in certain spots. I don't remember, I mean, I don't remember saying anything about it, but, I mean, well, it's a discussion that we need to have, um...
There's an apartment parking sign in front of my house.
I know they're still around. But I specifically remember, it wasn't all that long ago, because Joe Bush came in here and said, hey, you know, why don't we move those signs, nobody's parking there, we don't have the issues that we used to have, um, and that was probably just a couple of years ago. But, I, I, I mean, I think, you know, let's have the discussion if we don't want to do this anymore, I don't, I don't know. The thing about it is, there's, there's, there's parking there for people, you know, it's not like there isn't free parking for people that work at the hospital to park.
See, the other thing we got a lot, I used to live on East Second, and that's all on street parking. You start getting into granting everybody permit parking, and no one's going to be able to park in front of their house to begin with.
I don't understand what you mean.
If you have a neighbor that comes over and parks in my spot in front of my house, I can't park there, it's off the street.
If, if my name, well, that's true, except that if we all live on the same block, we all have permit parking, I don't understand, I don't understand your point.
But you don't get no, uh, you don't get no, you don't get no family or friends that come over.
No, but the point is, if not, I, I get that, okay? But, you're gonna, sure, you're going to get friends that come over, the point is, if they're, they're, I mean, I don't care one way or the other, I'm just saying, I, it doesn't matter, but I think the idea was that, um, you give people two, and it's not something that the police police on their own. So, you know, if, if your neighbor called because grandma's here, and she took the third spot, then yeah, I mean, that's a problem. I don't know how much, I don't know how often that, that was a problem back in the day when we had a lot of the permit parking. So I think it's a discussion we should just have as a group at the, at the agenda meeting in June, and, um, decide what we're going to do. Permit parking by your members are free.
By your house are free.
Okay. Then, why was Wayne saying when we said we were going to do it down there, that there was a fee associated with it? Because I remember saying, well, we'll waive the fee, because I thought it was free, and he said, no, there's a fee, downtown is free, and I said, okay. Part of the reason why, yeah, I mean, we need a whole kind of study of parking, downtown and in neighborhoods, but...
He said there was a fee that covered the cost of printing the permits in a sign.
It's not according to the ordinance.
It was a nominal fee.
But it's not in the ordinance?
The, for parking, for parking in front of your house, essentially, which this would be, it says that the chief of police will issue the permits without charge.
Okay. So, we need to talk, we need to wait till Blue Mar gets, Chief Blue Mar gets back, and Wayne and Luke have a discussion in general about what we want to do, and I can, I mean, I can argue both sides of this one, too. I could see both sides of it, so... Um, any new business, or other new business?
Who's responsible for the roads down in the parking lot?
The roads and the parking lot?
In, the road in the parking lot.
I think the parking, I don't know, there was, the parking lot, I believe, is...
The, the road that goes through Legion Keener Park is the Foundation's road.
The road that goes through Legion Keener Park is the Foundation's road?
Yes, however, the Foundations, the Foundation owns the ground underneath Legion Keener Park, however, it's leased to the Parks and Recreation Commission.
Okay, so...
So who's going to pay? Foundation or Park and Recreation?
So, where are we talking about? Just the, the whole road? Or just the road by Little Lake and then the parking lot?
The right turn in from the...
I'm asking Zach, if you don't mind, okay?
Well, I know where the parking is.
All right, well, I'm asking Zach, okay, and then I, and then you can answer, but...
There's a small section of the road that is owned by the city, it's by Irving, and it's near where R2 Rec wants to put in their, um, the new Deco, up from that street, and then it loops around football up to, up here.
Okay.
That's all the Foundation and Parks and Recreation.
So, the, okay. The school district just has then the parking lot, where the stadium is, that's, that's theirs?
If that's their lease agreement.
Yeah, okay.
But it's, it's not city-owned or leased property, it's separate from the Parks and Recreation.
Okay, okay, stop.
So who's going to add it rather than the parking lot?
One of those two.
One of those two?
How do we do that? How do we attempt to do that? It's like a mine field down there.
I can look into it, um, it might have...
I can bring it up to the meeting on the fifteenth, we have, what's, I think Thursday we have a market or a meeting.
Eric is bad, he's made a lot of people, yeah, he's made a lot of over Estes, and live.
If you remember, didn't we have a discussion about that?
Concerning the remis of the road?
Yeah. Yeah, okay. Um, I'll bring it up to the meeting on Thursday.
What was that discussion, if you don't mind me asking?
Like, it was, um, there was a meeting that we had held concerning, um...
Yeah, who was there, Chris Green? Yeah, I came up to Deco.
Deco meeting?
Yeah. That they were going to, I, all I can remember is they were going to look into fixing it, that it's theirs.
They understood that it was their opportunity, or it was, it was their...
Responsibility.
Responsibility. Um, I think there were some discussions concerning them dedicating the right of play to the city, but, um, the public works director made it clear that they would have certain, um, points that they would have to meet in order for us to accept it.
Yeah, I think, yeah, but the discussion was, if they got it up to our standards, would it make sense to just, you know, turn it over to the city, I think that was the discussion, but we never, it never moved on past that, it was just kind of, kind of, you know, talking about it, but I did, they did, they did agree that it was their responsibility to fix.
Yeah, I believe they understood that.
Mm-hmm. Any other new business? Okay, citizens' request, this is for anything else you want to talk about. Anybody in the audience want to speak? Please go to the microphone, state your name and address, um, and let us know what's on your mind, please.
My name's Jim Capuzzi, I'm at 729 Main Street, and I have a request for an ordinance in regards to outdoor speakers. I had an incident, well, it started last year, and I had spoken with Ann last year in regards to the placement of the speakers and in the volume, and this year it has come to a head. So, I'm looking for somebody to do something about the outdoor speakers, because what happened over the weekend, the placement of the speaker from the neighbors in my yard, the reverberation comes straight through the house. We don't get along, and that's another part of the whole thing, but as this goes through, I can't recall the cops all week, just because they're out. They can be sitting outside at times, but then they'll go inside and leave the speakers on, and listen to the music from inside the house as they're, as they're outside, and we can hear it in the house as if we were standing out in our yard over this. And, um, we had called, my wife had called the cops to come up, but I told her not to call 911, because I didn't believe it was an emergency, so she called.
You have to call 911.
Well, now, we're going to have to call 911, and these guys are going to be up at my house constantly. Now, I don't know if anybody else is having issues with any of this stuff, but I don't know if there's anything more you can do to tweak, uh, noise ordinance here or there, but, you know, that's kind of what I'm asking.
Uh, the borough of the city does not have a noise ordinance, as, as is indicated. We've talked about this previously last summer, there was some concern regarding noise of concerts. The issue that the city faces is enforceable. How do we measure the noise? We have to have some objective standard to determine that violates, and it's incitement for it. Unfortunately, a lot of the times that this is resolved is through private nuisance action.
So, he, when, when you say private nuisance action, do you...
A private nuisance action is a civil action about one property owner against the other, or the abatement of a nuisance.
For us to put it in ordinance, we have to have some measurement of, of decibel noise and all that kind of stuff, right?
Yeah, that's the animal, so it doesn't affect us.
I thought there was a 10 o'clock noise ordinance.
Zach said he thought there was a 10 o'clock noise ordinance.
But this is more of, uh, all day, as you're, as they're sitting over there all day, right, they're bidirectional speakers, so not only do they go towards his property, but they also reverberate into my yard. So when you look at them, it's almost, there's two speakers this way. This is my yard, where I'm getting his speaker noise, and this is his, and he has two of them, one on one side of the garage and one on the other side of the garage, above his fence, into my yard. And the way that the houses are sitting, there's enough reverberation back through there, that if I'm standing in my living room, I can hear the noise as if I was standing outside. If I walk to my kitchen, I can hear the noise as if I was standing outside, and it's ridiculous. And we had an incident this weekend, and that's one we hear today. Like, I don't mind if you turn it on, once you turn it on, turn it on to a decent level where I don't have to listen to it, but still can hear it in my yard, I don't care. I understand, but when I'm sitting in my house trying to watch TV, and have to close up my entire house like the one with the fire pit, you know, that's something a little bit different.
People just need to have, people need to be respectful of the fact that, you know, we live in neighborhoods, and you have to be respectful of your neighbors.
And I've asked.
I mean, you know, if you want...
Don't you think the cops have better things to do when they come up and just shoot over tombs?
What's your recommendation, Sergeant?
Call cops.
I know, you don't want to make, you don't want to make that run up either.
I, I believe, uh, Mr. Forsh is right, there is a, some, something in one of the I, I believe Mr. Porish is right, there is a, something in one of the ordinance is about quiet time, 10 p.m. to 6 a.m.
Yeah, that doesn't solve his problem though.
Unless you have a decimal reader, you know, you can try under the disorderly conduct, whether Mr. Mahady will let it fly, I doubt it because it depends on the time of day. If it's like 2:00 in the afternoon, I...
There's a problem.
You know, I can't, I can't really say he hasn't, you know, that there's anything wrong. And usually when we go, you know, if we can hear, like somebody's claiming there's loud music coming from inside the house, if we arrive and we get up there and we can hear it from the roadway, then we will knock on the door and tell them to turn it down. But if we can't hear it, then we don't have anything to go on because of, you know, we have to have more than just his say. All right, so basically if you're driving past my house two streets over and you can hear it two streets over because he has outdoor speakers. Yes. Then you can stop and say something. If that's the case, but again, it depends on the time of day. If it's 2:00 in the afternoon, I really can't say, you know, 10 o'clock at night, he's now entering the realm of dis- disorderly conduct, disturbing the peace. But in the middle of the day, I have to put on... It's, it's going to be very difficult to, to judge, you know, what, what you do from there. Well, that's exactly, that's my problem because... You'll have the right to file all this, like the solicitor said, Mr. Mahady, it's a disorderly conduct that you would file as a private citizen. You can do that on your own, you don't need us. All right. Well, keep that in mind.
Is he looking at court costs to do stuff like that?
Yes, he has to file and any, anything that's assessed against or is guilty of a person that is judged guilty, but I have to, I have to call.
That's the noise trucks. The noise trucks? I have 214, my visitor.
Yeah, I don't have 214, 300 either.
Okay, well, we'll have to...
That, that's on us, well, what if that finds as, we're not here, boom, 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 sound amplifying equipment, 214, 3.
Sound amplifying.
Yeah, amplifying equipment. This came up earlier. Yeah, this is, this has to do with vehicles that have sound amplifying, the noise trucks, you know, if someone's using a truck to advertise for everything, that's what that applies. And I think we had talked about, we needed to look into updating, updating that, sound trucks aren't as common in, in our, full influence. We currently, we certainly can update it, the problem is, is that, you know, how are we going to enforce this? Are we going to buy a decibel meter? And, and like I said, generally a lot of these types of issues are considered, you know, neighbor disputes where it's handled civilly rather than criminal. Okay. And those decibel meters, they have, they're expensive, they have to be calibrated, like a radar gun. Yeah, as with any sort of device used by the police, it has to be a group device that's been, you know...
Weight measures and all that stuff has to be calibrated.
Constantly certified, the operator has to be trained.
Okay. Sorry, what would help you?
That works.
But the other thing that may help you in your civil suit is if you have, you know, report that you've called about it multiple times, I don't know.
Well, very well, we're, we're on the wrong side of that.
Okay, I'll leave it at that. Anyone else? Ma'am?
Jessica Philistine, 114 West Monroe Street.
I'm sorry, what street?
West Monroe.
Okay.
Um, I just wanted to say I went to the interfaith service on Friday evening and I thought it was very well done, I thought it was a very good community gathering and heard positive remarks from the community since then and I was Chief Boomer, was here to tell him what a nice job that he did, but I think it was very important for this, you know, what's been going on in this area and I hope that, I don't know if any of you were aware of that, but I hope that it can continue and that it's something that, you know, the city takes very seriously.
Thank you. I was going to mention that in my mayor's report, I was unable to attend because I was out of town, but I did talk to several people who were there and it was a terrific event, a lot of work by the chief and whoever else, you know, he was working on for that. So yeah, I, I, we definitely need to recognize him and the efforts that he did as well as we all recognize what an important issue that is in our community. And anything we can do to raise awareness, I think we'll continue to do, anyone else? I know Jack, you were there, weren't you?
No.
Oh, you didn't? No, somebody, let me sit.
I was there for Parker.
Christine was there?
I was there and it was amazing to see so many people with standing room only, which was great. And they are going to continue, I guess, once a month to have these meetings and they're going to go out into the community, from what I've heard. So you're right, the chief did a great job and all the speakers were wonderful.
Me? Yeah, I tried, but I couldn't get back. Um, any other new business before I move on to, there's no city manager's report, so under the mayor's report, I just, again, thank you for leading for that. I also wanted to mention that we had a very successful Mr. Rogers Day. We really had a nice weekend weather-wise, so, and the Mr. Rogers Day was very successful. And you know, we're coming up on the 4th of July and lots of activities out in the balance neighborhoods and the weather's heating up, so everyone needs to be careful and drive slowly, be aware of the kids out there, be patient with the bridge. Our, we will have an agenda front meeting before the 4th, but this is our last formal council meeting before the 4th of July, so summer's going fast. Any, anyone on council have anything they want to say? I know, just started, we're halfway through June already.
I had two things actually. The first is that I think it's wonderful that our communities do the things that they do with the opioid vigil in combination of the Mr. Rogers Day that, you know, focused on the children and the events that are out there for them. I think that's how we can help our children not to have the other issues, to get them involved in positive things. And you know, this community is wonderful for that. And my other thing is that I went to a town to go out to dinner, the town shall remain nameless, but when I drove down this town Main Street, it was pitiful. It was a beautiful restaurant in the midst of a terrible, terrible Main Street. The parking garage was closed, the storefronts were shut, you know, it was just ridiculous. And at that time, I thought to myself again, how fortunate we are to have this community, revitalization, the people that care, the foundations, the people on council that work hard, you know, our chiefs that are involved, the police officers, the citizens in general that truly, truly care, it makes a big difference.
Thank you, Christine. On that note too, you're absolutely right, I mean, and sometimes you have to leave home to realize how, how fortunate we are here and, and the downtown is really, really amazing. If you haven't had a chance yet to drive by the pot op building next to the Roast Al Shop, make an effort to do that, it's amazing how, how nice it looks and it's, there's, you know, they're not done. So that's really exciting and I understand too that I think Chef Horn's Palace is going to be, and I don't think they already had one, but they're going to be doing occasional like barbecues out there in the, in the parklet, so that's a great way for the community people to get together and, you know, have some fellowship. So yeah, we are, we're very fortunate, sometimes we have to make sure we don't take it for granted, but I think, right? Anything else? Okay, if there's nothing else, then I will ask for a motion to adjourn. You don't want to leave? Thank you, Mr. Porish. And may I have a second, please?
Second.
All in favor?